One minute.
Recording in progress.
Came down to eat lunch with me. Yeah, he is. Thank you for coming to June 12, 2023 City Council Meeting Work Session at 4:00 P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Alice, would you please do a roll call?
Counselor McGee. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor Madigoo.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Is there any business from the public? I didn't see anything signed in over there. Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone in the gallery like to speak with the council? Would anybody online like to speak with the council? Hearing done, we'll move on. First thing up is a water master plan update. Ryan Beef, if I said that incorrectly, I apologize. We the first to speak? Can you be closer to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
How's that? Better? Think I have to go back and sign. Well, let's see.
Ryan, you'll just have to pull that microphone up really close to you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I'll speak up here in a second. I'm just making sure I have the audio right. Continue. Share screen. Okay. There we go. All right, so everyone can hear me okay? All right, so my name's Ryan Beef. I'm an engineer here with the city. I was here just about a year ago requesting council to approve the contract to begin this work, to complete a new water master plan. This project started in August of 2022 and is scheduled to be completed near the end of the calendar year. My report to you today is a high-level overview of the status of this ongoing work, but there will be some details provided along the way. There's also a lot to review here, so ideally, we could hold questions to the end. So all of us here have varying levels of experience with master plan work. So just for background, a master plan is the foundation of the capital improvement program. Master plans allow for an opportunity to take a deep dive into how the system is functioning and revisit how we need it to function. The final product essentially sets the course for how to prepare for growth with prioritized capital improvement projects, planning level costs, and schedules. Up-to-date assessments on where to focus investments is important. The city's last water master plan was completed in 2004. There are also relatively new requirements from the Oregon Health Authority for water system master plans requiring that plans developed after 2018 must include a seismic risk and resiliency assessment and mitigation plan. The goal with this is to identify a community's vulnerabilities to a Cascadia subduction zone earthquake and develop a plan to build resiliency to that inevitability. Before we go into the project update, I wanted to provide a very brief background of the basics of the water system. So, so starting with the big picture, here you can see a few familiar local waterways in the city outlined by the urban growth boundary, starting with the most upstream end of the system. The sources of the city's drinking water are the South Saniam River and the Saniam River. Just south of Lebanon at River Mile 29 is the first diversion of source water for the city. We'll call this point of diversion number one. The Saniam, from point of diversion number one, the Saniam Albany Canal carries water 18 miles to the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant and the adjacent hydropower plant. There are also about 10 minor features and structures along the canal to help it function. Point of diversion number two is located near the confluence of the North Saniam and South Saniam Rivers. From point of diversion number two, water is pumped about a mile and a half to the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. There are four major features, features, to point out at point of diversion number one. Here, water from the South Saniam River is diverted by this low-head dam into the Saniam Albany Canal, which is off to the right of the photo, just upstream of the dam there. Water diverted into the canal immediately flows through the V-shaped fish screens you can see here, and then flows through the canal headgates, which control the flow into the canal. The canal then carries water 18 miles to the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant and the adjacent hydropower plant with the hydro plant on the lower end of the photo there, just on the bank of the Calipari River. So, back to point of diversion number two, shown to the north. From point of diversion number two, water is pumped to the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant by this pump station, and you can see the Saniam River in the background there, to the AM plant shown here. The plant is the building to the right, and the AM reservoir is on the left there. It's almost a 6 million gallon reservoir, just shy of 6 million gallons.
Did you say 6 million?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm just having trouble. On the end of your sentences, they trail off. If you could be a little cognizant of that, because I can't hear as well as I used to. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 5.7 million gallons, so I'm just shy of 6, so. All right, so. Here, so from those two water treatment plants, water is distributed by pump stations, reservoirs, and 280 miles of pipe to about 20,000 customer meters. Major facilities include the reservoir at the AM plant, we saw a picture of there a second ago, the reservoir and pump station at the Vine Street Plant, the Queen Avenue and 34th Avenue reservoirs and pump stations, Broadway Reservoir, the North Albany Pump Station, the Wildwood Reservoir, and finally about, oh, let's see, Wildwood gives the pump station. And then 300, about 300 vertical feet above where we are now, there's the Valleyview Reservoir and the fourth-level pump station. So, another perspective on the layout of the system. This shows the major water system facilities in relation to each other based on elevation. The elevation changes in town are such that four separate pressure zones are necessary to make the system work. Each of these zones requires pumps to pump water up to them and reservoirs to store the water. These pumps and reservoirs are essentially sized based on customer demands in each zone. And here, we sit right near the base of the lowest pressure zone at an elevation of about 210 feet. So just a couple of pictures to show examples of the city's reservoirs and pump stations. This is the inside of the pump station at the Vine Street Water Plant. This pump station essentially pumps water from the Maple Street Reservoir and provides pressure to the lower pressure zones. Of all the reservoirs to show here today, the Wildwood Reservoir is a good one because you can't see it very well from the road, and this one hides up off of Edgewood Drive in North Albany. So that's the quick run-through for the background information on the water system itself. I guess I could stop for a second, see if you have any questions on, on the facilities themselves, but we can, we can just move forward. Okay.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay.
Please, Counselor Smith.
Confirm my memory. The water that we get at the, for the AM plant comes out of the bottom of the, the stream rather than off, sort of off the surface like the Lebanon area diversion.
Exactly, yeah, the AM is, there are screens on the bed of the river, the Saniam River there, and so it's, that flows to a wet well in the pump station and then pumped from that up to the AM plant.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, different intake, for sure.
Any other councils? Thank you very much for your presentation. Go ahead and continue, please. We'd love to have him join. So, are you finished? You go ahead and continue.
No, no, I have some more, sorry. So this, I talked for about 20 minutes here, so, okay. So as far as project background, we'll start with the overall objectives of the master plan work as summarized here. The primary goal is to deliver a water master plan that meets the needs of the city and satisfies the requirements of the state. Due to some of the, some of the unique features tied to the city's water system, we're also including additional work to assess aspects of the canal and the hydropower facility. Essentially, the summary of the overall objective of this master plan is to assess how the system is functioning, clarify how we need it to function, and then chart a course for how to get there. The scope of the work is split up in three major phases. Phase one develops the background criteria that improvements will be based on. Phase two includes the various condition assessments and evaluations. And this third phase consolidates all the work into a final master plan document and lays out the capital improvement program and the mitigation plan for seismic resiliency. From the schedule here, you can see the tasks in each phase and the approximate dates for when that work is underway. Here we have phase one tasks, phase two, and phase three, and you can see that here we are in July, so we've, we've made quite a bit of progress to date.
Here we are in July and what? I'm sorry?
Just to show, we've made a fair amount of progress to date.
Thank you.
You are tailing off. Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay, so these next three slides provide a brief summary of the work in each task. Phase one is broken up into four tasks, ranging from defining the service area to a summary of regulations, to development of performance criteria, to estimating future water demands. The bolded tasks are the ones we're going to highlight here today. Phase two, again here, includes the various condition assessments and evaluations. Task 210 just sets a basis for estimating project costs. Here you can see assessments are conducted on the treatment plants, pump stations, reservoirs, the canal, the pipe network, the hydro facility, and also the newer requirement to assess the city's overall resilience to natural disasters. Not needing again bolded tasks, we will go over here in a minute. And then phase three, again, as I mentioned, is essentially just the compilation of the assessments and development of the recommended improvements and final report. So here, we'll start to cover some, some highlights of what we've learned so far. From phase one, we will go into the levels of service goals and water demand projections. From phase two, we will talk a little about the plants, pump stations, reservoir condition assessments, the canal assessment, and give a little update on the ongoing risk assessment, and then provide a very brief summary of the hydro work. So, starting with the levels of service. So the levels of service, these are essentially just the performance goals of the system. Defining the level of service is a state requirement for master plans. There are three separate levels of service for three specific background conditions for which the city is expected to provide water service. Now, these are normal levels of service for everyday operations. The, the emergency levels of service, which are primarily related to temporary supply interruptions, and then the disaster recovery level of service. This disaster recovery level of service is the relatively new requirement from the state that essentially provides municipalities an ongoing opportunity to plan and prepare for providing water service to critical customers after a magnitude-nine Cascadia subduction zone earthquake. We are also looking at a 500-year flood event in this analysis. There's more information on that in upcoming slides. So some updates with the levels of service. Due to recent changes in the fire code, we are making some adjustments to the fire flow component that is included in the normal levels, normal levels of service. This is a good thing for the city in that it will allow for a shift towards improved, meaning lower water age throughout the system. In the emergency levels of service category, we are also maintaining a longstanding emergencies, emergency storage criteria to maintain a volume of one average day of demand in the system at all times. And with the disaster recovery level of service, we are essentially still working through that process, and there are some slides on that coming up. I'll talk more on that. Okay. So on to task 140, related to demands and water demand projections. This evaluation is almost complete. As mentioned, this work dug into historic trends and current water use and made projections of what demand may look like in the future. These future trends are based on the best available data in engineering judgment related to per capita water use rate, land use, water conservation, water loss, and regional climate. So I have a couple of slides here on the water demand. The first one provides a look at the actual long-term water use of the city from about 1995 to today. The most obvious thing to see here is rather, is the rather flat trend in water use. This is a phenomenon that is being seen in numerous communities and is the direct result of the implementation of specific water conservation measures, including improvements in fixture efficiencies, old water main replacement, leak detection programs, and improvements in metering and overall system accounting. As you'll see, it's not necessarily expected to continue like this, but it does represent a period of time where addressing some very low-hanging fruit has had some big impacts. So there are other factors affecting long-term projections. Here we can see estimated projections for what water demand is anticipated to look like through 2070. This is the theoretical anticipated date of complete development within the UGB. Now, one thing to point out here is that these updated demand projections are lower than what was predicted in 2004, and there's been a lot of work done since 2004, so there's, there may not be a significant future effort required related to projects that increase system capacity. So moving into highlights from, highlights from phase two tasks. We have four tasks to highlight here. The first are some takeaways from the treatment plant, pump station, and reservoir assessment. This work consisted primarily of visual inspections of the site, its structures, mechanical components, electrical and instrumentation and control features. The first takeaway here is that the 18-year-old AM plant is doing good. To date, the AM plant has undergone a handful of upgrades. There are no large concerns from the condition assessment related to this plant, and recommendations for possible future improvements are still being developed. So on the other end of a couple of scales here, we have the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant. This plant was built in 1912. This plant was Albany's sole source of drinking water until the AM plant was built. The number of modifications and improvements are obviously too numerous to mention here today. So, so this is a picture from last week, and this is a drawing from the plan set used to construct the plant in, from 1911. So that, in general, the main concerns so far at the Vine Street Plant are structural. The condition assessment has concluded that improvements to the structures or replacing structures to current seismic standards would be extremely expensive. Recommendations are still being developed. However, it is very likely that we will see a strong recommendation to assess the feasibility of the relocation or, or replacement of this facility. So the majority of the city's reservoirs and pump stations are in fair condition. The North Albany Pump Station, however, stands for potential upgrades or replacement due to pumping capacity and seismic stability deficiencies. As with most of the pump stations, this pump station would have a major impact if it failed. There may also be potential water conservation measures that would affect plans for this pump station, but that is still being looked at. So the assessment of the canal looked primarily at the condition of the channel banks, but it also collected information to help assess the overall stability of the canal. As noted here, the canal suffers from erosion, oversteeped banks, and has a significant number of bank failures of various magnitudes. The data from the assessment is still being processed, and we expect a report soon to outline the needs of this dynamic water system asset. Note that the other built features along the canal, such as the flow control structures and diversion wires, were also assessed, and while we are still waiting on that report, the preliminary conclusion is that those are all in relatively good condition. Okay, so on to the seismic risk assessment and mitigation planning requirements. The background with this is that in 2011, legislation was passed noting the probable impact of a Cascadia subduction zone earthquake and the need for a plan to move the state towards resilience to that event. The Oregon Resilience Plan was developed in 2013 and defined performance targets for resilience and detailed recommendations for meeting those targets over a 50-year period that started in 2013. Since 2018, the Oregon Health Authorities required certain-sized communities in vulnerable areas to conduct seismic risk assessments and provide 50-year mitigation plans. Albany's population and location is such that we are required to do this work. Required to do this work.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
You're doing well. You're doing great.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. In a nutshell, how the risk and resiliency plan works is that through the master plan process, the city identifies and prioritizes critical facilities for water supply, essential healthcare, emergency response, and social and economic needs. Then the major water lines providing water to those critical facilities are identified and categorized as backbone water lines. These critical facilities and backbone water lines are then categorized in a four-tiered system based on their immediacy of how they are needed in a post-disaster scenario. This table here provides some of the guidance used in the development of the city's critical facility list. This critical facility list was also developed in collaboration with the Fire Department and Emergency Management, and also utilized previous, previously established critical facility data from existing emergency management plans and also the city's recently approved natural hazard mitigation plan. So here's a map of the most critical, Class 4 and 3, critical facilities and backbone lines. These are the highest priority facilities and include features such as water treatment, reservoirs, pump stations, the hospital, a few urgent care facilities, fire stations, emergency operation centers, residential care facilities, schools, and large commercial water users. So, so once the critical facilities have been identified, they are assessed with respect to the actual subsurface geotechnical conditions at their location. An important takeaway from this work is summarized in the last bullet that states that even though there are recommendations to complete additional geotechnical investigation at the Vine Street Plant and at a selection of bridges that carry water lines, the preliminary conclusion is that there is generally a low risk of seismic hazard for a majority of the critical facilities, so this is a good thing. And then a short summary here on the assessment of the hydro plant. Excuse me. So as with the recommendation for how to approach the future of the Vine Street Plant, the recommendation for hydro is still being developed. What I can say today is that the hydro plant does not perform as well as it could or was originally intended, and that more investment would be necessary to get the hydro plant fully functioning. Okay, so we end the highlights with a few words from a couple of draft reports. A reoccurring observation heard throughout the most, throughout most of the inspection and the assessment process was of the obvious diligence and care taken by the people who operate and maintain these systems on a daily basis. So that recognition is worth repeating here today. And these are just some, you can read those quotes on your own there. So, that's the project update. We're just finishing up the last of the assessments, and we'll soon be putting together the actual recommended improvements, the long-term scheduling, compiling the report, and eventually starting the adoption process. The next city council interaction, I think, on this will be in a few months when we will have the consultant team here to review the draft recommendations. So that's all I have. I hope that was informative, and I will try to answer any questions you might have now.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions?
One question. It might have just not been on the screen long enough for me to absorb the information. But you had a timeline, and I couldn't tell what the end date was for all three phases.
It was, I think we're scheduled to be done by the end of this calendar year, December.
All three. Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you. I totally missed that. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Smith?
How do you determine the average day of demand? Is that based on season or?
So, yeah. Average day demand is typically, it's, I mean, it's simply, maybe it can be done in different, different ways, but it kind of represents, represents the demand in like the fall or the spring. It's also what the demand would be if you divided the band, demand by like 365 days of the year. So for the city, it's, it's like 6 million gallons a day.
You did it again, my friend.
But it's, it's pretty much.
You said 6 million gallons a day?
6 million gallons of water per day.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just, it really is just the average use over the year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other counselors? Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your time and presentation.
Thank you.
Next up on council agenda is discussion of proposed building and electrical program fee updates, Jonathan Balkema, page 2 through 17 of your packet. Thank you, Jonathan.
Good afternoon, Counselor and Mayor. Just here again to discuss a little bit about our proposed fee package for the building and electrical programs within community development. Not a lot has changed since the last time we talked a few weeks ago. We are coming, planning to come forward on Wednesday for the actual, asking you to take action on this. The only major thing that actually has changed since then is we do have a letter of support from the local building officials, our local building, Home Building Association's support for our actions, so we received that.
That's good.
So, just wanted to be here if you had any more questions, if you had time to look at it and had any questions, and you wanted to ask any more questions.
I don't have any questions.
I just.
Please.
If I may, it's not really a question, it's more of an observation. So we have less building and construction going on because of limited supplies, supply chain issues, increased cost of materials. And if I understand this correctly, staff's solution, suggestion in, with regard to that is to raise fees?
Our solution is to provide, maintain staff to provide those services for those that are still able to build. Unfortunately, we still have to provide a service even when the services aren't coming in as much, so we.
Right. Well, and the only reason I'm commenting here is because it's been my experience and my observation that anytime something becomes more expensive, you get less of it. So it's sort of a, maybe a vicious cycle because, you know, you have to raise your fees to pay your people who you have to pay whether anyone's building or not. Understood. But when you raise the fees, you're going to get less building.
Correct, and that's why we took a balanced approach to this. As the memo has said, there's various potential for future needed improvements to make sure that we're. that we're within cost recovery of staff time. What we're looking at right now is taking a modest, small increase, I think the residential side works out to about 5% on the structural permit, about 10% on the electrical permit, instead of taking a large chunk. At the time, we were trying to be representative of the economics for our clients, too.
And I can appreciate that, but I have to say in reading through it, and maybe it's just because I'm not, you know, I don't work in your field, but I had a very difficult time understanding it. I did have a question that I wrote down. We're 75 minutes of staff time for fire-related systems permit, that comes to $124.31, so you're suggesting $125 fee. Okay, so my question is, is that fee to be raised yearly, or can we add language that will say that it's going to be, for instance, $125 for this through the year 2026?
So our fees are adopted and won't be revisited until we come back to you and you take action. So at the current moment, we don't have any anticipated when we will be back each, at the end of each fiscal year. I end up doing an analysis just to make sure that we're not going backwards, and if we are seeing corrections that need to be done in the biennium, there's a chance we'll be back before the biennium's over that you guys just approved. But it really depends on the amount of projects that come in, the scale of the projects that come in, and.
So basically, there's no way to know.
There is no way to know, correct.
Okay, because I'm just concerned, because when you do have to raise fees, you're going to get less building, you're going to get, and maybe that's good, I don't know. Maybe, I know where I live, we have so much built out, it's obscene. So I'd rather, I mean, maybe this is working for good. Maybe it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith had a question?
I was going to ask a question, but I think I found the answer in the memo about how often we raise fees in the Building Division. According to the memo, the most recent fee adjustment occurred in January of 2020 for building inspection and February of 2010 for electrical.
Correct.
So it doesn't happen very often.
And actually, the 2020, there was some minor tweaks to increase the fees, I think of base fee in a couple areas, but it actually worked out to approximately 3% reduction because at that point, we were seeing a lot of growth and our funds were actually increasing a little too much.
Counselor Kompczyski?
Counselor Smith just beat me to that exact point, what she was bringing up, so, you know.
So thank you, anything, Counselor? Counselor Novak?
Did your portion of this go through page 32?
No, I stopped at 17, I think it was.
Okay, thank you. Then this next question does not pertain to that. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We'll see, Wednesday or?
Wednesday, correct.
Wednesday, thank you. Next on the agenda, oh, excuse me. Next on tonight's agenda is discussion of update to update fire and life safety service fees effective July 1, 2023. Laura Ratcliffe, pages 21 through 25 of your packet.
Thank you, Mayor and council persons. So I have three different items, I just wasn't clear, do I give them all right now or?
You have the clock.
Okay, I'll give them all right now. So the first one is for the update of fees. We have three different fee proposals. The first one is actually a correction on one that the previous council approved in 2020. How it was written was an error on our part. This is just clarifies that it's meant to be a 15% plan review fee on all building permits that come in that are regulated by the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, meaning the building code. And how it was written only really affected about one out of maybe 20 of those permits, so this is just correcting that error with language that wasn't the intent. The second one is fire-related systems permit fee, and that's for those who pull a permit to install fire sprinklers in the building, fire alarms, private hydrants, anything that's going to require not only a plan review and inspection from the Building Department, but from the Fire Department as well.
Excuse me, what I have on my agenda is the alternative installation of ERCC coverage system first, and then the update fire safety. I'm lost on the agenda where we are.
So the first thing on the agenda was resolution providing alternative installing of first responder systems. Wait, wait, I'm sorry, let me go back up here. The first thing I had was all the alternative installation of emergency responder communication, and then following that was?
Update fire and safety life.
Yep, update fire and safety.
And then the code update. Laura, on the agenda, you know the issue that we talked about in buildings for, yeah, that's just before the fees, that's all.
Okay, and that's originally how I was hoping it was going to be, I apologize. Do you want me to just go back?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So the alternative to the emergency responder communication coverage system, this is something that came into the Oregon Fire Code in 2010, a requirement that any building built over 50,000 square feet, it was required that they test their emergency responder radios for police and fire, and that would just let us know if, due to the size of their building and the construction, did we need to have an additional system put in to boost our signal. And here in Albany, since 2010, we've had at least 10 structures have to put in systems to boost our signal, and this comes at a significant cost to the builder. Snow Temp, I know they had to put in several systems, and they're planning on building more buildings, and they're at least $150,000 to put these systems in. And not only is there the cost, but what's happening when we're seeing more and more systems come in is they are fighting for a limited amount of radio bandwidth right now, and so they're causing interference with our communications, not just for police, but from fire as well. And so there's an alternative out there that other jurisdictions have opted to allow builders to choose from. They can obviously put in the system at a significant cost, or they have the option of doing a waiver, basically, or an alternative where they, it's based sole and square footage, where they would, you know, basically pay a fee, and this fee will go into a dedicated fund for the Fire Department that is specific to upgrading our communications system. And so they would have that option. There's other departments locally like Corvallis, Hillsborough, Eugene, Talton Valley and Fire and Rescue that have opted to do this. And mainly, it was because of the interference that they were experiencing. Each time a new system would go in, it would affect the other systems, the other systems would need to be maintained or fixed. There was a point in time in North Albany where a system went in in one of the new schools up there that actually knocked out signal to our fire station for a little while until we figured out what was happening. So we prefer not to have these systems put in, and I apologize for the table that is in here, it's not really, it kind of tells you what they would pay with this alternative, but it doesn't actually tell you what they would pay if they actually put the system in. So like this first one, if you just look at the Corvallis line there, and that's the fee schedule we're requesting to adopt, they would be paying $101,000 into this communications fund for us. If they were to install it, it would be nearly about $190,000 in addition to having to maintain it every year. And I've talked with a representative at Snow Temp, and every year, he keeps asking me, when are you guys going to have this waiver? When are you going to have this alternative? Because they also have buildings in Eugene, so the builders are on board with this option as well. And it helps the Fire Department to potentially upgrade our antiquated communications system because right now, we are on VHF, whereas police, most law enforcement is digital. And so the digital systems aren't that expensive, but the VHF, they actually have to grow crystals to be able to put our system in, which is time-consuming and not very cost-effective. So we're requesting that we adopt this fee schedule or this alternative for builders. And again, this is completely for new construction, anything existing, this would not affect. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
How long do you guys anticipate it would be before you could upgrade? Like, how long will this fee be in place before the upgrade happens? And then after the upgrade happens, are you not, are you going to discontinue the fee?
I don't expect the alternative to go away because the alternative, it would help maintain our system once we were able to. We only have about one building a year that is built over 50,000 square feet that comes in, so it's not like it's going to grow exponentially or, you know, that quickly. But it'll also help maintain what we currently have, and we'll start building on it. But we need several million dollars, and it's going to take quite a while. So this is kind of, not that this pot of money will be able to fully fund that change, but it'll definitely help it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith? Is this an annual fee or it's a one-time, when you build a building fee?
Yep, just one time at the time of permit.
Thanks.
Great question.
Any other counselors? Go ahead to the next thing, please.
All right, so the fire, the plan review fee, hopefully I went over that portion. If you had any questions, let me know. The second portion was the fire-related system plan review fee. If a contractor is going to be, you know, building a new building, putting in sprinklers, fire alarm, hood suppression system in a restaurant, or needing to put in private hydrants, they pull a permit through the Building Department as they always have. With the recent changes in the Oregon Structural Specialty Code, the building code, fire has more responsibility to go out and help inspect as well as do some plan review on that. So we have been going out a lot more on all these acceptance tests, and also, we just are really needing to have some cost recovery. We are down to just myself and deputy, Senior Deputy Fire Marshal Alfredo Mendez, who just gave you guys a little tutorial on the fire extinguishers. And so this will hopefully ideally lead to being able to fund another position. But quite a lot of our time is spent on new construction, going out to these, doing these inspections along with the Building Department, and we have never charged a fee ever for these, and so this would be new. We basically have done it for free. And then the last one is our land use applications. These are for when someone's going to, comes in for some land use action like a partition or a subdivision. The Fire Department is requested to also give comments for this, so we have site research, we provide comments, and then sometimes there are inspections that follow along with this. And so we were just requesting cost recovery of staff time for these as well. Anyone have questions?
Straightforward, I think. I think you're next up with the AMC code, right?
Yes.
Please continue.
All right, and this one just removes a lot of language that is already in the Oregon Fire Code. I'm not quite sure why it was in the municipal code, it was just pretty redundant, so just really cleaned it up, streamlined it, and it removes the adoption of the Oregon Fire Code, which sounds counterintuitive, but since we work alongside with the Office of State Fire Marshal, they have said if we adopt the Oregon Fire Code, there's limited things that they can help us with, which is interesting, but that's just how it works. So just, we work with them, and they're the ones who adopt the Oregon Fire Code. And so in order for them to assist us with inspections and whatnot, they, that was just one thing they asked us to remove. And then we also add the Compliance Engine. It's a records management tool, it's a third party. So if someone comes in and inspects the fire sprinklers here or fire alarms, they upload the inspection report to this third party's database. This third party manages those for us. They send out letters if there's any deficiencies and kind of follows up on it, whereas before, we were the ones that had to do that on our own. And so this one, there's no cost to the city for this, it's free. It's been pretty amazing. All the jurisdictions around us use it, we've been using it since November, and this is just codifying it in the municipal code. And let's see here. I think that's pretty much it for that one.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? It's pretty straightforward as far as I'm concerned. Well, will we see you Wednesday night with these?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you.
Next up on council agenda, resolution governing the display of flags on city property. City Master Peter Trodson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all have seen the draft resolution in your packet. To bring you back a few weeks, the council directed that we develop a flag policy, and what we've done is go to the League of Oregon Cities for assistance. They provide a draft policy, and that is what you see in front of you, altered, of course, to, for our particular city circumstances. I've heard from one counselor about potential changes, and I'll leave it to the counselor to bring those up, and any other counselor who might want to bring anything to the table for discussion, and that's the end of my presentation.
Counselor Smith?
That would be me. Before I discuss the draft before us, I have a brief statement that I would like to make. On May 10th, when the council voted to fly the pride flag on the pole at City Hall for the month of June, I opposed the decision, but I did not adequately explain why. I voted no because I believe government flag poles should fly only government flags. It's that simple. To use the space for other banners, we need an official policy that is clear, objective, and fair. The proposed language before us today does that, though I suggest one change. In the second recital, I suggest removing the phrase "rather as a non-public forum for" and tightening up the rest of the sentence without it, and I'll read that shortly. Flying a flag on a pole at a public building is a public act, but is not a forum. It expresses the governing body's opinion without opportunity for exchanging ideas or views on the topic represented by the non-governmental flag. When an alternative display was proposed for the pride flag on May 24, I voted for that. Everyone, that City Hall Plaza was designated as a space for community gatherings. It has been used to educate, celebrate, mourn, and peacefully demonstrate. It is a visible, welcoming place to exercise free speech. Now, the change that I recommend in the second recital of the resolution would make that recital read, "Whereas, in adopting this resolution, the city council declares that flag poles owned or maintained by the City of Albany are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but for the display of any governmental and non-governmental flag authorized by the city council, either required by law or as an expression of the city council's official government speech." I'm finished.
Go ahead, Counsel Novak.
Thank you. I have a problem where it talks about official government speech of the city council. I don't think the city council has any business making government speech in that manner. I just, I take issue with that, and I also, I don't understand exactly, maybe staff or someone can explain, how this fits with the mission statement, which is providing quality public services for a better Albany community. What does this have to do with that mission? I don't see the fit.
You have something?
I just wanted to clarify.
Counsel Newton?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that government speech is defined underneath the First Amendment. It's not like, yeah, it's, that's a protected form of speech underneath the First Amendment of the Constitution in the United States.
Well, maybe we could modify it then. Official government speech of the city council, to me, that sounds like the city council is saying, this is where we stand on this issue, on this, you know. is saying, this is where we stand on this issue, on this, you know, political issue. And I, I, I don't think the city council, we should be doing the business of the city, which has to do with providing quality public services for a better Albany community. I, I know we've all heard from a lot of different constituents in the last few weeks. In fact, I have a letter that I'll be sharing with you in a few minutes from some folks who, like so many who live in our town, they, they didn't really understand how things work and how you get things before the council. So, I told them I would help them by sharing their point of view when I have my opportunity. But...
Okay. Yeah. Let me go ahead and...
Am I, I was still talking. Am I being cut off?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. So, providing quality public services for a better Albany community, I just, I get hung up there with how that's consistent with the city's mission, and I did lose my train of thought. I fully did. I was headed somewhere, and I, I am not there. So, may I ask permission to...
Of course.
Speak again if it should come back to me in a timely manner? Thank you.
Counsel Komsinski.
Yes, I think this is a very well reasoned statement that's come out via the LOC and modified for the City of Albany, especially with what Counselor Smith has changed or recommended be changed. And I would move that we have that language changed for the actual presentation on Wednesday.
So, there I need a little qualification because I didn't, I didn't know where you were reading precisely and what it says now versus, would you mind repeating that? No, I have it in front of me, but I didn't see that.
There's no motion.
He just moved. Okay. So...
I'm, yeah.
Okay.
I moved that the language that is currently on our presentation be changed to match what Counselor Smith recommended.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion since there's an active motion on the floor.
And, and while you're, Mr. Mayor, while you're discussing, if I could, one other suggestion had been in the section 2.4...
Oh, thank you.
To remove the word reasonable. We don't have to remove that. You don't have to remove that. But I think the reason that that was brought up was the, the problems associated with defining what reasonable is. So, I just want to bring that to your attention. If, if you, again, you can go with the motion as stated right now and leave it in there, but you will then, when it comes time to do so, be faced with the, the need to decide whether something is reasonable or not.
Well, I was kind of waiting till all councils had the chance to speak.
Which is what we're doing now.
Well, I haven't had the chance to speak.
True.
So, are we going to make a motion right now? Or can you...
No, we've, we've got one that we're, we're discussing now. So, it's already been motioned and seconded, so you can be...
I thought we were still discussing it as well. I was hoping for an opportunity to have that hot come back to me.
We are still discussing it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have motioned a second on the floor, on before us. All those in favor of the change?
We're still discussing it.
Okay. Okay.
You said that you had something to say, sir.
Yeah.
I was waiting for you to finish.
No, I was, I, it still hasn't come back to me, and I, I would like to hear from everybody.
So, so, when I originally ran for office, I didn't, I didn't see and did not want Albany City Council to be an activist council. I believe that ungovernment buildings paid for by the people, for the people, there should be government flags, foreigner flags, and whether it be state flag, government, any government issue flag. Anything else, to me, is inappropriate. And if it had been a 42 vote last time, I'd have vetoed it. I think that not all people are represented when you fly a given flag, whether it be the gay, gay pride flag, or the Black Lives Matter flag, or heterosexual flag. I believe it's inappropriate to do that. That's my stance, and that's why I was upset about it last time. But this language is fine, but we also, I believe that if we're going to make a political statement, the council vote should be six to nothing for it to pass.
Should, should be what?
Six to nothing for it to pass.
Sir, I, I, my thoughts came back. So, thank you for the opportunity. One thing that I want to be clear on, I can't imagine that there's anyone in this room or in the sound of my voice, or really anywhere, who doesn't have people in their life who consider themselves somewhere on LBGTQ. I don't know if there's more letters added or not, but, and that includes myself. So, this is, I, I, I really hope people who've taken, who've been very upset with me in their emails will hear my voice when I say that I have friends, I have loved ones, I have people in my family who are, as one gentleman keeps referring to himself, my tribe, my tribe. Okay. So, people I love. This, this is not about love. I have a lot of compassion, especially for, for people with gender dysphoria and for people who have detransitioned and the way they've been treated by the tribe, to quote that gentleman. So, again, this is, from my perspective, actually, what the mayor and Counselor Smith have said, which is in a public governmental situation, the only flags that represent us all, and I've had constituents bring this to my attention, are the, the US flag and the Oregon flag. They represent everyone, and to raise any other flag discriminates against everyone who doesn't consider themselves part of a particular tribe, or that particular tribe, whatever tribe is being elevated. So, I, I would hope that people would hear this and that they'd think about it a little bit and just know, it's not, it's not a matter of we don't love you, we don't have compassion, we don't care. It's a matter of the right time, the right place, what is appropriate. And so, that is where I will leave off with that. Thank you very much.
Counsel Komsinski. What is the process for me to cancel the motion and change it to be...
amend.
City attorney.
Are you trying to amend your motion?
To amend the motion.
You could withdraw your motion, or we could vote on this motion and purposely vote it down and then bring up a new motion. Either one would work.
Could we amend the motion?
I'm here.
Who's that?
Ramisia.
Oh, hi, Dr. McGee.
How are you all?
So, could we, could, if he withdraws, could the second withdraw and then re...
Yeah, he could both withdraw your, your motion, withdraw your second, and then do it again.
Start all over.
Yeah, and start over. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, this is formality.
Yeah, but I'll rephrase it then for, right away, as soon as we withdraw it, then I'll turn around and rephrase it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. I'd like to move that we amend the proposed resolution to what Counselor Smith changed and the recommendation from the city manager about the timeframe. Section 2.4.
Section 2.4.
Being reasonable, taking the word reasonable out.
For the record, for the record, I'll read that section.
Your changes, you mean?
Yes, I'll, I could read both changes if you like.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas in adopting this resolution, the city council declares that flag poles owned or maintained by the City of Albany are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but for the display of any governmental and non-governmental flag authorized by the city council, either required by law or as an expression of the city council's official government speech. Under section two, the change would occur in item number four, sub four. Commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is customary for the subject that is to be commemorated.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah.
So, I move that.
Have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
We're not, we're not, we're, this is approving the change and the language to bring back to us on Wednesday.
Wednesday night, right. Don't know, so motion passes?
Yeah.
Counsel Novak?
I did.
You did? Okay. unanimously passed?
So, Mr. Mayor, we will make those changes and bring it back Wednesday evening on the consent agenda unless otherwise directed.
All right. Thank you. Next upon the agenda is business from the council, and I will start with, who did I start with last time? I'll start with Dr. McGee. I haven't started with her yet.
Oh, I don't have any business at the moment.
All right. Thank you. Let's go across to Counsel Montague.
I, like many of you, got to attend the groundbreaking for the Hub City Village this weekend, and I got a little bit of sunburn on my head, but it was totally worth it because it was an exciting day, exciting day for Albany, exciting day for, for that team. And I was just really proud of all of us that we got to go and that we were able to help facilitate that. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Counsel Komsinski.
Nothing this evening.
Counsel Smith.
No.
You good?
Yep, I'm good.
Counsel Newton.
I don't have anything at this time.
Nothing at this time? And all I have...
Sir, you skipped.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Novak.
I know you didn't.
I always have to go first. I'm sorry.
I know, and that's, I was going to point that out and say, not tonight, because it was me last time. So...
Sorry about that.
So, okay. So, if I may, I, I promised this sweet couple who did not, they don't, a lot of folks don't know how things are done. I didn't know until coming on the council, how you get information before a counselor. So, I promised them I would help them and read their letter because they wanted to share their point of view. So, it says, Honorable City Council, dear council members, as a resident of Albany, it is with heavy heart and confusion I write to you regarding the display of a pride flag in our esteemed City Hall. Despite the moral implications, such a banner stirs up in a fraction of our citizens, the unfairness of such could lead to division in the harmony of our community. By highlighting one human condition or lifestyle over other groups, it's not responsible, caring, or inclusive of all citizens. We are US citizens first, all, and Oregonians second. The federal and state flags alone should be displayed, especially in our common governmental buildings. Beyond that, government has much more important work to do than to promote one group's activity over another. I sincerely encourage you to carefully consider the opinions of all the citizens of Albany as you deliberate on a flag display policy. I would urge you to seek unity rather than division in our city. However, the simplest and fairest policy would be to fly only the federal and state flags. Sincerely, John and Kim. That's all I have, sir.
I have one also, but they wanted it read at the city council meeting. So, also, that's the one that you sent me today? Can you include it in the packet or send it to everybody then? Thank you, Counsel Novak. And one thing I have is, so, my car finally died. It finally died. If you follow me on Facebook, I took it to BNR wrecking, got a check for 275 bucks, and they, and they brought, brought a big forklift out, lifted it up, and carried it away. But you know, it was the first car in my entire life, there was no emotional attachment. There's no emotional attachment. It's just a tool.
B.
It was just a tool. Get me from building to building, meeting to meeting, and I didn't, it didn't bother me one bit when I watched him take it away.
But this one broke your heart?
No, my truck, the lady that totaled my truck broke my heart. It was paid, it paid it off, and three, three months later, she's, she totaled it. So, anyway, anyway, that was all I have for tonight. Senior manager, would you please give us your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, fire extinguisher training has been carried out today in a couple of sessions, and I wanted to commend Kinsey for coordinating it and Alfredo Mendez for putting it on. I think it was probably pretty valuable for all those who had a chance to partake. The second thing is that we've been working with OB companies, Eugene developer, to explore possibilities for developing a downtown hotel and hospitality facilities, amenities. And we'd like to offer the opportunity to visit the Gordon Hotel in Fifth Avenue Development in, in the course of a field trip to Eugene. And I'll be reaching out to each one of you individually to find what might be a, a best date and time combination for you. And I'll, I'll do that in this coming week. And that's all I have, Mayor.
I forgot one thing. Kinsey sent out Peter's evaluation information. Please start working on that. So, thank you. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.